I'd like to call to order the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with the roll call. Michelle, do the roll call, please?
Yes. Granland?
Here.
Madeiras?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Petway, here. Superintendent Stenwick?
Here.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, we have our approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Oh, who was that?
Michelle.
A second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. August twentieth at five thirty PM will be our work session here in the community room. August twenty-seventh at six PM is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. September third is the first day of school. Very exciting. September tenth at five PM, and actually that will be changed, September tenth at four forty-five PM is the Subcommittee on Policy in the Community Room. September tenth at five PM is the Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Training Room. And September tenth at six PM is a regular school board meeting. Next, we will move to closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot zero-three, the Board will adjourn to a closed session to discuss negotiation strategy. Can I get a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We'll move to closed session. We are returning to open session at seven oh-two. We were closed for the purpose of contract negotiation strategy. Next is communication to the Board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the Board. Good, yep, okay. Since there's nobody but our directors in the room, we're gonna carry on as there's nobody here to address the Board. Next, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report from August fourteenth, the school board minutes from the July ninth meeting, and the Treasury Report for June twenty twenty-four, and the Read Act Memorandum of Understanding. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion?
Can I make a motion?
You, we have-
Or is this out of order, you know? I think it is out of order.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion, yeah, we have a motion.
Okay.
On the floor.
Is your motion germane to the consent agenda?
I was gonna suggest we poll that last item for separate consideration and vote.
We have to amend the agenda. Which we can do with a two-thirds vote.
So, let me ask this question for Robert's rules sake. Because we're on the consent agenda, if we, we can, I thought we could poll anything from the consent agenda and then it just gets voted on very, the very next thing.
Right, it's its own item, but normally you poll the item off the consent agenda.
When you're, when we're doing the approval of the agenda.
Prior to the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
So, but we can.
Yep. Is, Laura, is your request to move that off the agenda, off the consent agenda related to Jessica?
Well, maybe I can just make a public note about that in discussion if that's-
During the discussion.
We're in discussion. Okay, if that's amenable, amenable to the group. So, I will be abstaining from the consent agenda specifically because of item D, the Read Act MOU, as it is an MOU addendum to the seven-ten contract, and my spouse is, employment is covered by that contract.
Thank you. Does that work for you, Laura?
Oh, certainly. I just, I just figured if we pulled that out and voted on that separately, then, then obviously your vote would still be quite appropriate for the rest of those items.
Thank you.
I just wanna, I just, I just know that this is out of order right now to do that, so.
No, we're, I think we're covered with the, we have the motion to approve in a second for the consent agenda. In discussion, had that conversation. We're not going to pull it out or make an agenda amendment. So, thank you, both of you. So at this point, we are going to vote on the consent agenda as it appears on the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Sorry, I've
Partially?
Out of habit.
Yes.
Um, could we start the vote over on that motion, please? Thank you.
Yes, yes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Jessica abstains.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Is she abstaining from all of them then?
Yes, she has.
I abstain from voting on the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Like, is there a partial abstain?
Thank you all. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. And as soon as it loads, I will read it. Okay, our acknowledgement contributions is a resolution, so I will read that and then we will move that forward. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Minnesota Statute one twenty-three B dot zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the profit, to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the Board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number Thirteen resolves to accept with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background, seven thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. The contributions include donations to the follow, by the following, to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund for the Ranjana Tuckrell Memorial Scholarship. Kathy Skrip and Anne Hagland for a hundred dollars, Kristen Stunkel, Rhonda Basfield and Valley View Sunshine for fifty dollars, Regina Shai for two hundred dollars, and Carrie Trinan for twenty-five dollars. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters donated three thousand five hundred dollars to support the boys soccer program. The Columbia Heights Basketball Association donated three thousand five hundred dollars for the Columbia Academy scoreboard. In-kind donations, Jim and Susan Conklin donated a framed team picture of the nineteen twenty-seven Columbia Heights Boys Basketball Team. The total fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five monetary contributions to date, seven thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Mary?
I think just as always, every time we get to this part, I'm just simply amazed at how generous our community continues to be. And, you know, thank you all so much.
Yeah, I agree, and I love seeing that the donation of the nineteen twenty-seven Columbia Heights Boys Basketball Team picture, that's pretty cool.
Where is that gonna be located?
I'll have to remember. It'll be over at the high school, whether it's Highlander Center or high school. It was fun, as you know, I was able to meet with them and ask them to write down as much information as they could so we could, you know, keep it with the photo.
Awesome.
It's coming up on its hundred-year anniversary here pretty quick.
Yep, we're gonna, we'll, we'll talk about that, what we're gonna do for our centennial.
Yeah. Awesome, great. Any other discussion? All right, since this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call. Michelle, do you have the roll call vote, please?
Yep. Granland?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Madeiras?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items, starting with the reports from members of the Board, and we will start with Jessica.
Sure, I don't have much to report. We had a little bit of a break since our last meeting, but I did attend the Title IX webinar that MSBA hosted back in July, so that was some good information. And then just additionally, I wanted to note that my own kids have been participating in a lot of the programming that the city is doing through Parks and Recreation in partnership with the school district and some new things this year. And they've really been enjoying it, and the other families and kids that I've talked to over at Merson Hall and other places in the city have been really enjoying that. So, while I know we had extensive conversation here at the Board Table about our summer programming and what we are and aren't able to accomplish, I am really proud of the partnership that we have between the city and our district in being able to make opportunities available and promote those opportunities that we, that we can offer through the city. So, that's all my report.
Julie?
I also attended the MSBA Title IX discussion, which I found very interesting in July. And then just this last Monday, I attended the Fridley City Council meeting and gave them a little update on just kind of where we are with CISO, you know, our, our strategic plan. I started out with just thanking them for, you know, passing our levy and how that is going to impact our students and being able to recruit and retain great teachers. I also thank them for the scholarships that our students got from like the Lions Club in Fridley, the Rotary, et cetera, so that they, you know, to, to let them know that we do see that, that they're participating in that and providing assistance to our students. I did mention that we had the one student that received the Kent Cook Award of fifty-five thousand a year, up to fifty-five thousand a year, and that he was the only one in Minnesota out of sixty in the nation that received that scholarship. And so I wanted to give that positive reinforcement to our, to our Fridley residents to let them know, you know, our school district is doing good things. So I, I did that and gave them a little, kind of the summary of our strategic plan and that our next steps is to implement that. So, that's where, that's what I'm done.
Thank you, Julie. Laura?
I really don't have a whole lot to, to report on. I attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement prior to this meeting. I did attend the nine sixteen meeting last week. That's pretty much it, and I will defer any, anything else until another meeting because it's already, seems like it's been a long one. Thank you.
Thanks. Michelle?
Yeah, I will keep it as short as I can, although I've been doing a lot. So I went to the Little Shop of Horrors with the Adult Enrichment Program. That was a lot of fun. So much fun that I bought tickets and took my family so that my little one could see it, which it was all worth it. She enjoyed it. And someone came and they gave us, we were walking out and someone walked in with a baggie full of like bracelets that they like handmade. And so we walked out with like these like free little gifts from it, so that was fun. And then I went to the Grand, the Golden Nuts Grand Opening. That was like mid-July. Just new business in the area, and it's, it's very, very nice, very big. I didn't think there was that much space there. But yeah, stop by if you get a chance. I went to Medtronic to volunteer with some bike building with Principal Coleman and other district members and board members. And that was a great moment to be able to volunteer with people and to go inside Medtronic because I've never been in there, and it was nice to just be inside a place I always drive by. I attended the, the Columbia Heights Police Department hosted an eat and greet at McKenna Park. I attended the LEED conference at the U of M and participated on the panel for Black Men Teach, which is over at North Park, which is where my daughter attends school, and she was also on the panel as well as two other teachers from the school. So that was a really good opportunity for her to be in a space and have someone from the U of M to tell her to pay attention to them when she's filling out college applications. So, you know, we're ahead of our time here. I also attended the ICNA, which is the Islamic Circle of North America. They had hosted a bookbag and supply giveaway at, at Keys Park, and they had some produce there. There was a police officer there with his car so the kids could go in and just look at the car. Red Cross was there. Lots of resources and things like that, which got some business cards so I can give them to some of our families at North Park during our BIPOC family advisory meetings, so that they can have some resources as well. I attended the MSBA Summer Seminar where governance was like a big part of that, big theme there. Learned a lot. I attended the Title One meeting at North Park, which was great. Anita attended that as well. And so we got to really see what the process is going into school and what it takes to really organize the students' day, like each class's day and the grades, and how they do things. So that, that was great insight, and we got to give some input to there. So that was an awesome experience. I attended National Night Out, popped around to some different neighborhoods, spoke to some people, and met different community members, which was a great experience. I attended the League of Women Voters Summer Social, which was a great opportunity as well to meet some people. Representative Sandra Feist was there and had a great MDEF look at what she does for work, which is, and and I'm gonna space on it.
Immigration?
Immigration lawyer. Thank you so much. I tried to beat you to it. I was gonna get there. I attended the Monarch Festival, which I think was last week, which was a lot of fun as well. And then I attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting before this. I'm gonna breathe now.
Very busy. Thank you.
Yes.
Mary?
Oh, similar. So unfortunately, I did not make the chair meeting with the shift to Wednesday over Tuesday, but I was able to make the Subcommittee meeting. Shout out to Stephanie with my panicked text messages today about scheduling, so thank you so much for that. I've had a lot of meetings and conversations with community members, Representative Omar and her staff, Representative Feist, Mayor Marquez Simila, and Mayor Wiggins from Hilltop, and various city council members between Hilltop and also Columbia Heights. I also joined the bike building at Medtronic. Somewhere somebody has video of us dancing, and I have no shame. It was amazing. So much fun to be able to, to volunteer with our, with our community for the kiddos. Let's see, I also attended the Blooming Sunshine End of the Year sort of picnic that they have. So that included Heights Next, yep, and member Petway was also there. That included Heights Next, the Rotary and Kiwanis Clubs. It was really wonderfully attended. There were so many people there that shared food that they made from the food forests there. This was really wonderful. And then also just being able to connect with people. I also attended the National Night Out, and one thing that really was pretty fantastic was that so many of the things that people end up evaluating our school district on are very far behind. It's a year behind, right? So, we're talking about things now that happened last year. And it was really great to be able to sort of across all of these community events, talk about the things that we're doing really well here. The fact that we, we don't have a deficit like so many of our surrounding districts. And the fact that we have, for the first time, we were able to retain staff instead of cut them for budget reasons. And that, you know, to be able to look at my son and know that that hasn't really happened in his lifetime before. And so people were really pleasantly surprised to hear that. And it was just really joyful to be able to, to point out all of the ways which we know we're doing good things and that we won't, you know, from the conversations we had with our community before, while we made the strategic plan, to be able to share those things. And the fact that we were listening and we've been, we've been doing the work. So that was really fantastic. I also came to the farmer's market last week, which was great. A lot of fun, and I think- The student-led farmer's market? Yes, the student-led farmer's market. Yes, sorry, yes. Just a question. Yep, yep. From, from Blooming Heights here, it was adorable. They did a really great job. Next year, if people can make it, they should try and come. It's pretty fantastic. And what a great thing to do and what a great way to support our students in our, the program we have here. And then lots of phone calls with Superintendent Stenwick, with members Petway and Madeiras. And I'm sure I left something out, but really, at this point, it's a lot, so, thank you.
Thank you. Going back to not the long list here, so I did enjoy our little bit of a break. So I got to kind of reconnect and ready to jump back into it. Did attend the chair meeting this evening, also the Subcommittee on Policy with member Hool and member Madeiras were-
How quickly we forget.
As well. Left that off the report. They were there.
An hour ago.
Greatly appreciated. It was an hour meeting, yep. So, very good meeting on policy. Also had conversations with Superintendent Stenwick and with member Palmer. And, yes, and
We have each other.
We just, we just make sure we just fill each other in on all the things that we did together, right?
Unified board.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, and that is it for me. So we will move on to the Superintendent's report and correspondent Superintendent Stenwick.
Thank you. There's just a buzz about the district this week, so many staff have returned and many student activities and programs have started. And so there's just a different energy this week in the district, so it's, it's really exciting. Earlier this week, Assistant Superintendent Bondo Niambu and I testified at the Legislative Study Group on absenteeism. We have also met with other districts named in the statute for the statewide attendance pilot. We're really grateful for that pilot project because it's, we will be funded for that project over the next three years. So a great statewide collaboration on attacking chronic absenteeism and supporting more attendance because it really does impact student growth, right? And that's what it's all about. District nine sixteen is also working on the issue of chronic absenteeism. And last week, we met with various county attorneys, the Commissioner of Education, and superintendents within the nine sixteen organization. And that was really a great discussion, talking about how the different organizations and agencies, how we can have inter-agency collaboration for kids who are unenrolled and are out there. And, you know, and so we brainstormed lots of ways that where we could make sure that our students are enrolled and attending school. Additionally, as the Board knows, our district team has been meeting with the non-licensed union groups for contract negotiations over the summer. I've also been able to attend local conferences this summer, including the LEED conference, where member Petway and the North Park team did an amazing job as panelists. I also attended the MDE Back to School Conference, which was really, really exciting to connect and hear all of the, you know, there was presentations on compliance and what's new in legislature, and then also Read Act, I mean, which is also compliance and legislature, but I was able to have conversations with member Petway, member Hool, Vice Chair Granland, and Chair Mueller. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to action items. We have one action item this evening, and that is building capacity at Valley View. Superintendent Stenwick?
Thanks. So as the Board members know, we review enrollment numbers on a weekly basis. This is a kind of a tricky time of year because staff are just returning. The staff who, who's in charge of processing the drops, so drops meaning anyone who's moved away over the summer, and then also vigorously processing the steady August enrollment that we're seeing. As you recall, we've been watching the Valley View numbers based on what we knew the enrollment was gonna be. And we knew this last spring when we closed some of the Highland Grades last spring. So we've been watching those numbers. The principal's worked very closely with his, his staff at Valley View and the Placement Center. So they've completed all of the drops. They've only had six students drop over the summer, which is remarkable. And we've gotten, you know, an increase additionally. You know, some of the kindergarten families are new, and so phone calls have been made to, to some of the families, just like, just confirming, are you, are you coming? So we feel good about the numbers in requesting that, that the Board close to open enrollment, Valley View Kindergarten and Valley View Second Grade. You know, there's already, I think, twenty-seven, twenty-six students, second graders in the four different sections. So as you, as you know, we need to reserve room and space for resident students. And the kindergarten classrooms are at about twenty-three. So we also need to reserve room for resident students and looking at those enrollment trends. So I think the specific, the exact wording is seeking approval to close Valley View Elementary Grades, kindergarten, and set, and grade two during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, or until those grades are no longer beyond capacity. So the Board will continue to receive weekly enrollment updates and will connect on, and watch that. And, you know, if, if, on the one hand, it's amazing to be able to close because that means we have robust enrollment, and on the other hand, we want, you know, we don't want to close and have our enrollment drop, so we just keep an eye on it. So that's what I'm here seeking approval for this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
May I please have a motion to approve the closure of Valley View Elementary Grade, Kindergarten, and Grade Two during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, or until those grades are no longer beyond capacity?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Mary?
This is actually one of the things that I was able to share and that delighted people the most is, you know, first of all, that open enrollment has its own set of rules and laws that we have to follow, but also that when families are finding out that we've closed to open enrollment, we have more families moving into the community. And this closing it for kindergarten is really massively unheard of. And so the fact that that's where we're at, I think, is, should be an indicator to the community that our school district is doing a fantastic job and also drawing people to move within the boundaries. So that's amazing. Keep up the great work.
Just a question. So we, I know for generally that if there is a student who's enrolled through open enrollment and we close open enrollment, they're allowed to stay open enrolled. I'm wondering if the same thing is true for any students who may have been like pre-K students at Valley View that were then going into kindergarten. We have spaces for any of those students?
Yes, so, and we, the school staff does, you know, connects with the families and really works to, in the, you know, in the spring to enroll the pre-K four students into kindergarten. So those families have already all been contacted if they were already in the school, yes.
Thank you.
Great question. Mary?
Similarly, actually, siblings, if we have somebody who's open enrolled and say they're going into the second grade or something, and they have a younger sibling coming, do, are they allowed to come in under this, or?
So the district has the right of assignment to a school for open enrolled students. So what would happen if a family came in with multiple grade levels? The folks at the Placement Center would say, here's where the openings are for your whole family.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm sorry. So your example, though, is a student who is already enrolled in Valley View?
Well, yeah, so say a student, say we have somebody that is going into a different grade, but they've got a younger sibling that's going into kindergarten. Would we support them to open enroll to the same school?
Oh, now that there's no openings there.
Yeah, that's, so like, are we grandfather, you know, to use a term that's very old, do we, do we let people join in because of already?
I'd have to double-check the statute, but I don't recall a sibling preference in statute. So if, if one sibling is already enrolled and another has been enrolled elsewhere, I don't recall a sibling statute. I think with anything, though, we do case-by-case basis.
Exactly, yep, yep, for sure.
I was gonna say, when I, I've had kids in school for like ever, okay? I mean, my last one's gonna be a senior this year, so I'll be finally done. But I remember there was about a three years between siblings. If it was more than three years, you know, then, then they would be just assigned. Because we were, when we moved, we stayed in one, but we stayed still in the same district. So the, the gap in them, you know, my, my child was, was assigned to a different school in the actual zone that I was in. So I imagine it would probably be something similar to that, or a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, yeah, if anybody's watching, and maybe if you get- Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, yeah, if anybody's watching, and maybe if you get that information, you put it in our packet, but for anybody watching, if you, you know, have a child who's attending Valley View and you're open enrolled, and you have a kindergartner coming, contact the placement office, so...
There you go, thank you, yes.
Any other discussion? All right, here then, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? Mary?
I do, thank you. So just wanted to give people a quick update about the Subcommittee for Family Engagement. We are hoping to be able to have a bilingual listening session available sometime in mid-October, so prior to that, Superintendent Stenvick, we were hoping that we can schedule a meeting with you and the Subcommittee, so that we can talk about what maybe that looks like and sort of make a plan. And I think the, so that piece, because we really want to still have those listening sessions and be available, and also, we want to make sure that they are useful for families and meeting them where they're at, instead of necessarily, you know, just assuming people are gonna come in and, and ask for what they need or tell us what their concerns are. So hopefully, we can schedule something with you to have a meeting, to plan what that can look like. We're hoping for about six-ish weeks into the school year, because that's a really good timeframe for people to sort of settle into a routine and start to see how things are shaking out, or where they may need more support, or any concerns come up, so. And then, you know, hopeful to get the dates and times for open houses, because we know historically, that's been a lot of really great questions and contact with the, you know, families coming in, and hopefully, the, with the idea that we would all be able to, to join one of those, to be able to be present for those, and to be, again, meet our students and families where they're at, instead of expecting them to come to us here in the district center all the time, so. And I believe that is about where we were at. Did I missing anything? My co-
I mean, National Night Out, we went to Legends.
That's it, yes, thank you.
Home or apartments, I'm not sure.
It's an assisted living home.
Okay, thanks. And so, there was this...
The activities director.
Need for like having children there to, you know, sing if they're in choir, we do like a, a show or something. She had, she had hinted around like Christmas time or holiday time, so, but, but also just any time to come over and paint nails, color pictures, do crafts or something like that. I'm not sure of where that would start, and so I just wanna start the conversation here and say that we do have someone who wants to partner with the schools to get, you know, that, that kind of interaction. They wouldn't be coming to us, and they also, some of them don't have, you know, smaller kids and, you know, grandkids, or, you know, a lot of people coming to see them, and it would be really nice to, you know, show up for them sometime this year and do something there, if not, create some sort of schedule. So, that was something that really was like, oh, okay, that's a great idea, and so I have a contact over there, and we can like hopefully get a ball rolling with that.
Reminds me, I'm not sure if any, those of you who have had children on Highland, Highland has a connection with Crestview.
I heard, yeah. That came up too, yeah, so at least we have a good reference point too, so that we can have some structure around it, and, you know, and have a plan.
Thank you. Always a fabulous event. It's one of the most enjoyable.
Rescue prom?
Prom, and then they do singing over there too, yeah.
Michelle?
Yeah, I wanna let the best go last. So, there's actually a couple of Movie in the Park events coming up, so if you wanna do a double feature and drive like down the street, Fridley is having one at Fridley Commons Park, they're gonna be showing Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, I believe, and that's gonna be at six-thirty this Friday, and then at eight-thirty, Columbia Heights is gonna have a, a movie in the park, and that's gonna be Back to the Future, and that's gonna be at Housit Park. So, I don't know, something to do on a Friday night with the kiddos or family, might be a good idea.
Good, perfect. I have two items. One is just letting you guys know, I will not be at the work session next week, so Mary will be cheering that, I have an out-of-town work commitment. And then the other one is after this meeting, Superintendent Stenvick and the rest of the team have presents for you that I got advanced, in advance, but if you would like your Head Heart Hands t-shirt.
I love that.
Our Highlanders.
I've been begging for this.
I know.
If we're Back to School Week, you can get that after the meeting.
Woo-hoo, thank you.
Your visual aid of...
Are we invited to wear those to convocation?
You're invited to wear those to convocation, yes. Or the, you know, new staff lunch next week, or, you know, every day between now and September third, would be wonderful.
Or graduation.
Right, yeah.
But basically, blue and gold is required at convocation.
Thank you, I was gonna say that, I'm like dying, yeah.
Yeah, blue and gold is required.
The gold shoes, Member Maderis?
Yeah.
Break them out.
Any excuse to break them out, yeah.
Perfect. Any other board topics?
Um, who, are we supposed to contact Stephanie for confirmation of our attendance to?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will do that.
Yeah, so we've got two things really coming up. One is the new staff luncheon, which is on Tuesday, the twentieth, and the other is convocation and the all-staff picnic, which is twenty-eight.
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 Um, the one on the twentieth is at noon, just so people know, and then one on twenty-eighth is nine-thirty arrival, nine-forty-five to set to start.
Except for you and I.
Yes. Yes, Mary and I will be...
Yes.
Touring of the new staff around the city of Columbia Heights.
In the bus.
In a bus, yeah. I mean, for the first time, we have...
Two buses.
So many, we have so many staff that we're bringing on, that we have two buses.
Gotta, it's robust enrollment.
Yes. Doing good work.
Any, any other board topics? All right, then we will adjourn at seven-thirty seven.